So it's. Seven thirty-two, we'll open the November first meeting of the Medfield Planning Board with our roll call. So Jim, Jim Brand, sorry.
I'm here.
Great, Teresa James.
Here.
And Sarah Lemke.
Here.
And Paul McKechnie.
Yeah.
Right, and we have associate member Blake McDermott as a attendee. And also joining us on staff is Sarah Repose, a town planner, and Cara O'Connell, our new administrative assistant. So for hearing our meeting tonight, we have no changes of use, but we do have an A and R. And since we have a few more attendees than we normally do, I thought it would might be helpful for Sarah to give us just a quick. One-on-one for everyone on what an A and R is and what we'll be doing this evening.
All right, I'm sharing my screen with a little A and R primer. I have about five slides. Can you see that?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, very good. All right, I just want to, for the benefit of those folks who are kind of new to. What an A and R is and isn't, just wanted to share a few. Bits of the subdivision control law that the planning board is responsible for. We all know that planning board does say plan approval. Under local zoning and they also do subdivision control. Subdivision control law. Actually explicitly defines what a subdivision is. And it's written here for you. I'm not going to go into it. I'm just going to pull a couple of bits out. So the planning board can endorse an A and R plan, approval not required plan. If it's shown on a public way. If there is a way shown. So the first one is if it's already shown on the town clerk's list of public ways. Or on the list of. Oh, okay, Cara, I'm gonna make you co-host. And can you promote Jamie to a panelist? Okay, sorry about that. Or on the list that the town clerk maintains as public ways. On a way shown. Out of a way that was presented to the planning board and endorsed in accordance with the subdivision control law. Or in a way that was in existence prior to when Medfield adopted the subdivision control law. I believe that was nineteen, Anewell Town Meeting nineteen fifty-three. And so when that's presented to the board, then the board will make an analysis. On suitable grade sufficient width adequacy of the way. And that would be not what is being presented tonight. But those are the main. Areas of subdivision control, I'm sorry, A and R. The other thing that you, the planning board will see quite often is just kind of like changing the shape of a lot, maybe like a land swap between. Neighbors. And then what we're seeing tonight is something under, that's known as under eighty-one L, which. Basically is when there is a tract of land on which exists two or more buildings. When the subdivision, subdivision control law went into effect. So. This is basically saying that if you've got some buildings. Barns, houses. Anybody can put forth a plan to the planning board. And it's up to the planning board to make the determination of whether the buildings that. Are being proposed as being substantial are indeed that. And with any A and R plan, it does not need to conform to zoning. Just because a lot can get this, a, this planning board endorsement under A and R does not mean it's a buildable lot. And in some cases. You don't actually want to create a non-conformity that makes a buildable lot non-buildable. Um, the process for A and Rs is that an applicant submits their plan. To the town, so we received this particular plan last Tuesday now, so therefore we have. The planning board has twenty-one days to indicate to the applicant. If they're going to endorse it. And if not, then. In the other case, the planning board through me submits a notice of decision or certificate. To the applicant indicating whether or not they have met the requirement. And then. If the plan. Shows a subdivision or doesn't meet the board's. The requirements, then the board may or may not. Endorse it. So if it doesn't have the required frontage, in this case, it's a. Hundred eighty foot of frontage in the RE zoning district and. You know, it's an eighty thousand square foot minimum lot size for a buildable lot. And as a reminder, the applicant submitted a. A and R plan, or a couple of A and R plans last year. The planning board did endorse this three-lot plan showing proposed lot number two. Is shown on this plan, this new plan, so it's not actually the subject of it, so we're just looking at. One A and one B. Okay. And it is, which is the now being reconfigured. Into this current plan. And this is the current plan, and then I went ahead. I don't know if it's helpful to anybody, but I went ahead and used my highlighters to. Kind of show you what the current plan looks like, and I'm definitely going to turn it over to Mr. Smith for him to make his recommendation. But I just wanted to kind of tie in the elements of the statute with what we're looking at here, so. I'm gonna pause my slides there and then turn it over to.
That's great. No, thanks for that. And I think if you'd like to promote Mr. Smith. That would be, that would be great. I think just getting a baseline of what an A and R is, it's confusing.
It is, and I didn't want to go into the weeds. I think you'll get there in a moment.
And I know we've got a fair number of attendees, so I think once we've had a chance to review the plan and pose some questions, we'd welcome questions from others as well. But anything that folks would like to add other than a welcome to Mr. Smith?
Am I on deck?
You're on deck, sir.
Thank you. I apologize for my glasses. I can't really see that well. So as, as Sarah said. I'm Matthew Smith. I'm a Medfield resident residing at forty-nine, forty-nine Elm Street. So the house on the plan is where I'm currently living and speaking to you from. And the applicant Dover Mill LLC, I'm the manager-owner of that company. And we have in fact submitted a plan for endorsement under approval not required regulations. Of the subdivision control law specifically under eighty-one L exemption of the subdivision control law. And I'll read the exact law. The division of attractive land on which two or more buildings were standing. When subdivision control law took effect in the city or town in which the land lies into separate lots. On which one of each set such building remained standing shall not constitute a subdivision. So if I can satisfy to the board or if the board denies it, if I can satisfy to the land court. That subdivision control law doesn't apply, I'm entitled to this endorsement under the law. All the endorsement does is let me record the plan at the registry of deeds. It entitles me to no zoning rights, nothing. I can just simply record the plan. So some of the evidence I provided, I've provided photographs of the buildings to prove they're still standing, because that's one of the conditions of the statute. I've provided a recorded plan from the registry of deeds of a survey done in nineteen forty-four. Which predates nineteen fifty-three subdivision control law, so that plan from the registry of deeds shows the date for these buildings. I actually found some graffiti in one of the barns that was standing at least in nineteen twenty-six when it was dated. So. I've met the threshold of having the buildings on each lot, lot one A, lot one B, lot one C. I've met the threshold of showing that they existed prior to condition subdivision control law. And there's only two land court cases where this has ever been heard in land court. Both cases, the court overturned the planning board's rule. And basically Sitco versus. Braintree Planning Board, the court ruled a building is a building. Does not have to be a dwelling unit. Now, we talk about zoning conformance. That's zoning for a dwelling unit. There's no zoning requirement for a building that predates subdivision control law. Part of the intent of this law being written was back in nineteen fifty-three, the value of the property wasn't in the land, it was actually in the buildings. And so the legislators were protecting owners of buildings. It's kind of flipped where the value of these days is in the land, but that's not what we're looking at. So the question that Sarah kind of implied, the only thing that hasn't been tested in land court is. Is a chicken coop qualifies as substantial, for example. So there is no case law, other than the way the court has ruled historically, is that a building is a building. And the case law in Taylor versus the planning board of Pembroke. The use of the building is not the controlling issue in determining, determining eighty-one L exemption. So understanding that there is kind of a little bit of latitude here of the court has laid silence so far on what a substantial structure is. I tried to provide four different cases of why these are substantial buildings. One, I would be required to apply for a building permit to build these buildings. Two, I would have to have an engineered plan or an architectural plan showing these buildings meet the building code. Okay, see, the cost of these structures would be about a hundred thousand dollars for the rear, rear gambrel barn. And probably fifty to sixty for the front twenty-two by twenty-two structure. That's significant value, you know, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, and I also, it's interesting, when the land court looks at cases and rulings for local towns and planning boards. They look to what the zoning laws are, which is also important. And Medfield residents have voted in an historic properties bylaw, three hundred five point six. It actually defines an historic property, so forty-nine Elm Street is by zoning law, historic property. I have a seventeen fourteen Hannah Adams House in a pre-nineteen hundred barn. The planning board already previously ruled that I was entitled to an eighty-one L exemption for the plan Sarah showed you previously. I'm just slightly changing the shape of the lots, okay? But the zoning specifically defines what a significant structure in his Medfield on a historic property. And the status of these buildings, these buildings have to be old, or I wouldn't qualify for the exemption being older than nineteen fifty-three. So this in fact would apply in a land court case that a structure, a significant structure is defined in Medfield zoning under the historic properties. Is a structure, the use or purpose of which is substantial in terms of the present purpose or use of the property, such as carriage house. Caretaker's house, barns or similar buildings. So even the bylaw defines it as significant, but finally, this property, it has a total acreage of twenty-one acres. And agricultural zoning under the state law to be classified as a farm only requires five acres to be classified as a farm under the law. And they don't even have to be contiguous, because my lot is on both sides of Elm Street. So these barns being separated off under the eighty-one L exemption and being recorded. I can also convey those barns with land, and I've created two conforming farms where people could legally keep livestock in these barns. And also under Medfield zoning for agriculture, that's the one use you can't abandon. Most, every other use under zoning in Medfield, if you haven't continued the use in two years, the use is considered expired under zoning. So I think those are the five different reasons that they all say this is significant. But again, that's not been tested in the court and it's not written in the exemption, so it is a gray area. But that is why I believe I'm entitled to A and R endorsement under the eighty-one L exemption. Of two or more buildings, and I think the photographs and the documents from the registry of deeds. Meet the threshold of. Substantial proof, but I'll leave that to the decision of the board. The last thing I will state is. A and R review requires a public meeting, not a public hearing. So it's not really open to public input, it's for the board to decide if the threshold for endorsements has been met.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate the presentation as well, and as well as the materials that you provided with us, of course. Stuff was coming in fast and furious today, so I think Sarah collected everything into one document that I think we had a lot of chance to take a look at. And I know you're right about the gray area. I mean, the A and R handbook that we all use. States what constitutes the substantial building is still not clear, and so I think part of our job is to look at that gray area. That's where folks think that we're all kind of lean towards on this. Any questions from board members here for Mr. Smith?
I.
Materials.
Which I asked over email through Sarah, but I did want to ask it again in person so that it is heard by the other members and or the public. So one of my questions was, can you describe Mr. Smith to each of the two? The rear barn and the front barn, which for reference for people, the one that's kind of along the back edge of the property, which Sarah had shown on the. I think the pink lot, and then the, yes, so the, the top left corner of what Sarah is showing. That's the rear barn, call it for the sake of this meeting, rear barn. And then the other barn in question is where Sarah is circling now, we'll call that the front barn. And both of those are distinguished from the larger barn, which is on the green lot, which we addressed a year ago. So as it relates to the left front barn and the rear barn, can you talk about the foundations and whether those are served by utilities?
Yeah, so I, Sarah asked that question. Am I, am I on?
Yeah, go ahead. I just have the, the plan up just for the benefit of folks watching who may not have it printed out.
Okay, I'm Zoom not so savvy, so I've called this. But yes, I sent Sarah pictures, the rear barn has electricity fed from the front barn. And the rear barn, both barns have full foundations, so frost walls going down. And they have concrete slabs as well. The rear barn actually has a chimney for an old wood stove, so. I hate to think about it, but a caretaker might have actually slept there. The larger slab in the back that's highlighted, that's a two hundred by twenty, so that's. Like two hundred by twenty, that's four thousand square feet of concrete. Where a chicken coop, a lar, I mean, this was a huge chicken farm is what it was. There's actually another. Rubble foundation out there from another huge barn. Those have long since gone. But it does have utilities, which is one of the questions that. The building in the Pembroke case had, it did have electricity, it was made of cement, so these structures meet that threshold.
Question about Sarah's front barn, then on some of the other plans that were submitted, it was called a one-car garage. In some of the earlier. Layouts that we saw, and I don't know, Sarah, if you have the photo of it as well. I tried to do kind of the windshield survey going by. And you know, kind of what's a, what's a barn versus which is, which is the garage, because in the, the Sitco case. You know, the, with the building versus the buildings, a building statement that you have, the, there's the sentence there that it claimed that a detached garage or chicken house. Or a woodshed qualifies under this exception might present a different case. So I wonder if that's. That's something you'd like to. To address.
Well, I think I, I would address it from the standpoint that it's written in there purely as speculation. Okay, of what, we, we know what's significant, but what is insignificant? But that barn right there has, you're looking at the front, so that's a twenty foot across the front and twenty-four feet deep. So you can fit two full vehicles in there, therefore you could fit two pieces of farm equipment in there, for example. But the sides, if you look at the right side of that building, how it's built into the ground, okay? That's an eight-foot tall concrete retaining wall on three sides. So that wall alone under current building code must be engineered by a professional engineer stamped, approved by the building department. Because that's not just acting as a building, it's acting as a retaining wall. So if I have to have a professional engineer design it, I would call that significant would be my argument. I would also say twenty by twenty-four feet, I'm required to pull a building permit for that, I'm required to build that to current building code. That building certainly has been maintained, it's had a new roof in the last ten years, clearly the owners have updated the garage door. So it's, the building is being maintained in active use, and I think we'd all agree a garage is a building, I'm sure the building inspector.
I, I wouldn't actually, but I'll let you continue.
I'm just saying, that is your opinion, but as a degreed engineer and a licensed builder. It's a building under the law, because it's a building under the building code. It's not a dwelling, it's a building.
And I think I, I, we're looking at the same A and R handbook where the explanation from the state was the landholder may have a problem arguing that a garage. Woodshed or chicken house or buildings that would qualify under eighty-one L exemption, so that was the one thing that, that flagged it for me for this. This front structure.
Seth, when you're ready, I have some feedback I'd like to share. I was just gonna say, in terms of the points, Seth, to respond to, I, I just want to make two distinctions I think are worth the board noting. One is that the language is not whether the building is significant, but whether it's substantial. That, that can have, you know, different implications, so just looking at the standard. But secondly, the building code, whether a building permit is required, whether a licensed engineer drawing is required under the building code. Relates not only to buildings, but also to structures, and I think the statute is very clear, and the A and R handbook is very clear. In what minimal legislative history there is, that the choice of the word building was intentional. It wasn't, the choice of the word wasn't structure, it was building. So I think you can have something that is a structure, but not a building, and a retaining wall is a perfect example, something that is. Regulated, but not a building. So in my mind, and based on how this board has acted in the past, when we have had this issue, we've looked at whether or not a building. Is, whether it's more than a structure and is in fact a building, looking at things like foundations, utilities, history of the building. The habitable, it doesn't have to be a dwelling unit, but the habitableness of the structure. And I agree with you, Seth, and looking at the image of the, what I'm calling the front barn, which is the one to the left. That it seems to me to fall squarely under the garage language of the Sitco case.
So, the Sitco case was, the planning board was overruled, and the land court ruled Sitco was correct. They said a.
Actually, the language of the case mentions that they're not passing on whether something that is a garage, a shed, or a chicken coop. Might have a different problem, so I don't think they were dispositive on the point of whether those three things would be. Qualify for exemption.
Well, the, the exact language, they claim that a detached garage or chicken house or woodshed qualifies. Under this exemption might, courts, that's, that not shall, might present.
But that's fine, but they didn't say that it qualified either.
No, no, because the court will only rule on what's before them. There's the actual statute, and then there's case law. So what I would say.
I agree with you that the case law is very scant on this.
And I'm trying to just, I can only present the facts as they exist. There's only two cases where the eighty-one L exemption, there's three cases.
There's, there's another.
Not applying for variances here.
There is another one, there is a newer case since the A and R handbook came out that addresses single-family dwellings. So it's also not on point, because those were clearly habitable dwelling units in all of the cases, which is not the case here. So further evidence that we're talking about buildings, not structures, in my mind. The last thing I want to say, Seth, if I could continue, the last thing I wanted to say, Seth, that I think the board should bear in mind is that. I think, you know, I understand why you may want to look to the historic bylaw to see how the town of Medfield has treated other definitions. But in this case, the historic bylaw, first of all, that's the zoning board, not the planning board. It's a special permit standard, which is different than an A and R, you know, standard, so it's a very different kind of analysis. And also in that case, the specific definition makes reference to the use of, the historic use of the property. Or the present use as it relates to historic purposes. And of the very few cases that there are on eighty-one L, of the two referenced in the, in our handbook. One of them says that the use of the building is actually not controlling in any way. So I don't think that definition is really on point for the analysis that we have to make here.
Well, if, if the use is not controlling, therefore any use is allowed. The use not controlling goes back to a building is a building. So the large concrete slab, the four thousand square foot concrete slab in the back, that is a structure. As defined under code, because it is what you said, it's built from concrete, the structure still remains, the building doesn't. The building's long since collapsed, and one thing that actually is written in the eighty-one L law very clearly, structure still standing. So they are still standing, they are significant for the reasons I delineated and put into the public record. And clearly, you are entitled to deny it if you can make an argument that it's not significant. And then we can test this at Land Court. It, it seems not appropriate, because I've already showed two reasons, both for agricultural reasons, this conforms to Medfield zoning. Okay, and I've also showed an historic exemption that I can go before the zoning board. And there is a legal path for me to have all four lots.
They're totally unrelated, they're unrelated.
Not unrelated, because that's why.
You know what, Mr. Smith, you're not going to get into an argument with you over Zoom. I think Seth, Mr. Chair, you would like to.
Yeah, sure.
I think I've made my points here, but other people may have other questions.
Before I grab anybody else, I did take a look at, at the, the letter that we had that approved the. The, the change from September of twenty twenty, and we noted the two substantial buildings and identified the primary dwelling. And then the accessory barn garage. We, we didn't say it, you know, to, to make the point of your, your, your original petition that, you know, there are not only two, but there are four. On this property. Do we consider this to be these, the, the front structure in the barn in the back to be substantial buildings during that?
We weren't provided any information about those buildings, because they weren't relevant. We made the three-lot A and R finding based on the lot to the right, which qualified on its own with frontage.
Frontage.
Then the main house, I can't remember the number, forty-nine, and then the barn that's substantial and kind of close up to the road. Those were the buildings, you know, issue. Actually, I don't even know if we needed to make that finding back then, but we weren't looking at these buildings that were presented now.
Right, right, okay. Are there other questions from the board?
Are there any other utilities that are brought to these two locations? Other than the electricity that you mentioned?
There any two utilities?
Like, is there water or any other service brought to either one of these locations?
Teresa, were you about to ask a question?
I have the same question.
Okay.
Just a clarification, though, on, on just to make sure that I understand the current uses of this. Though, the one up front is currently being used as a garage, and the one towards the back, some older plans I saw. That it was the grain barn, but is this, is this, is it just an unoccupied building at this time, Mr. Smith?
So basically, as you see from the pictures, like with my dog in front of it, there's two large doors. So they're basically both serving as garden sheds, because I'm maintaining twenty one acres. So if, so I don't know if landscaping's farming or not, but certainly, when you have a property this size, you need a place to keep equipment. So again, the use of the building has been deemed not relevant to um, the land court ruling, but I I, the answer is they're used for storage, because they're storage buildings.
Jamie or Paul then?
I uh, I'll be candid with you guys, I, you know, this eighty one L exemption was something that was a little outside of my purview and I ended up going down a bit of a wormhole reading case law about, but it was more related to when eighty one L exemption goes before the ZBA and the impacts of that. And I got, um, so I think there's, there's a lot to this, you know, and I think um, you know, it's a, it's an interesting situation, you know, creating this, uh, these lots, or they, as they refer to them as divisions and not uh, you know, actually a subdivision, but um, I don't, I don't really have too much to offer, other than, I guess, you know, I guess I need to do a little bit more homework for the next one on this, but I I'm not, I'm I'm a non-voting member, so um, I guess I'm rambling at this point, but uh, it's been interesting, and I appreciate you bringing this before us, and I appreciate all the board's opinions and input as well.
I myself have just more questions, and just in terms of the classification of those structures being uh, substantial. Um, that's just trying to get a better understanding of that. Their true classification, whether or not they would be considered substantial. I mean, the grain shed, you know, chicken coop, regardless of the size, um, if it was a chicken coop, I mean, it's a slab now. I'm not sure if there's any documentation showing that it was a chicken coop, you did show us pictures of it being, you know, the barn that's back there now. Um, but yeah, what was predate the subdivision control laws of that structure, if you had any more information regarding that.
Oh, Mr. Smith, you're on mute.
Apologize for that, I was trying to be respectful while they were talking, because I was, made the mistake of talking over, which I apologize. Um, as far as the substantial nature, I I I can't, I can't meet a threshold that is yet to be defined by the laws it's written, or as the land court has decided. So I offered five different definitions as an engineering person who's been doing zoning and building for fifteen years. And I said, well, here's five different questions that could be asked, that in my mind say they're substantial. So my suggestion to the board is you're a hundred percent entitled to deny this, but you need to deny this with your specific definition of why these are not substantial structures. Because.
They've made a pretty clear.
I've read it's a chicken coop, that's not the law, that's not, that the 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 court.
We actually don't know what the law is, none of us do. So ultimately, it will be up to the court to decide. I agree, we need to be clear about what the reasoning is, if we grant or we deny. Um, but I think that, you know, I completely appreciate that it's hard for you to meet a standard that isn't clearly established, that that's, you know, the fault of the case law that exists. So that is difficult from your perspective. But I, and I do think we've asked questions that, you've provided some evidence. We've had an opportunity to think about it, we can talk about it some more, but we can clearly state why we feel the way we do when we get to that point.
Yeah, I I think the standard, as I read the law, the standard is two or more buildings before subdivision. I've met that standard with a registry of deeds plan. The standard of are they still standing, a licensed surveyor has surveyed their size and locations and put it on an endorsed plan. And, I mean, the size and location is already recorded at the registry from last year's A and R plan. And I've shown photos, they still stand. I've defined the construction, I've defined the utilities, and I've given five different reasons of judging substantial and why I believe it meets that threshold. I do know the land court looks at zoning laws, in the case of frontage, some towns define frontage as a street and they define a street. And an A and R plan does not meet the zoning threshold, but that doesn't entitle the A and R plan to be not endorsed, okay? Zoning board is a different kettle of fish than the planning board. And the court case is already ruled plainly, the language here is very brief, but they've ruled a building is a building. And there's, you know, so I I don't think, I think you may need to make a very strong case for rejecting me, especially when I show the zoning bylaw, that these could easily be conforming dwellings in front of a ZBA.
I I'm happy to hear other people's feedback, but whenever we're ready, I'm comfortable to state why I think this should be denied.
I know this isn't a hearing where we have public comment, but we've got a number of folks uh, here. And I wonder what people think about, um, I I'm always surprised the the kind of expertise that's in town. Uh, so if if anyone has something kind of related to this, this topic, uh, be interested.
When I was again promoting Jeff Hyman.
So you could raise your hand virtually or type in a question, uh, and if you don't mind, please identify yourself and uh, street address.
Hi, this is Jeff Hyman from Metacomet Street. Uh, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, thank you uh, to the board. Um, I just had, um, I just had a couple of questions. Um, actually, incidentally, I actually looked at the house when it was for sale, and um, yeah, the back barn is substantially dilapidated, um, I'm not sure it could be used for much. Um, as far as frost walls, it's basically a hole in the ground at this point. Um, and I did look at the other structures as well, obviously, at that time. I'm not sure I'd wanna put a classic car in the garage, but beyond that, my question is really a few things. What, can you, can the board talk about the frontage? Sarah mentioned, we know the RE RE district requires a hundred and eighty feet of frontage, and then something that we call two hundred and twenty feet of width. And we don't, you know, we we use the term, we don't allow pork chop lots. So I'm just trying to, can that be addressed to so that we can understand how, looks like you can't use that.
Yeah, Jeff, I just, I think that, um, this is Sarah Lemke. I think um, you have sort of valid questions about subdivision generally, but they're actually not relevant to the case at hand. Um, so maybe just a quick explanation of why. So what Mr. Smith has presented is an exemption from the subdivision control law, which would otherwise require lots meet certain standards provided in zoning, including frontage, lot width, the perfect square. So if he made the case that these buildings meet this definition of substantial in the eighty one L definition of what a subdivision is, or is not in this case, then um, whether or not there is frontage is irrelevant. So generally, you cannot have pork chop lots. But as he's presented it, the argument is that this is not a subdivision, because the buildings predated the adoption of the subdivision control law. So whether or not the lot on which these structures exist, or buildings as he's calling them, um, doesn't matter to the question of uh, whether there's frontage, or whether there's frontage is not relevant to the question at hand.
Okay, I understand. Thank you for that. Um, and the only other thing was, so, and maybe it's not for this discussion, because I, what you're saying is this is a very finite question about exemption, and we're really not talking about all the other aspects like wetland setbacks.
Yes, actually, I should have said that whether it's buildable or not, for other reasons, is also irrelevant to this analysis.
Yep, thank you for that.
In many ways, the proposal cuts out a lot of our work in terms of determining lot size and frontage. Um, and it just focuses on the question really at hand with eighty one L, um, with these, uh, with the question of substantial buildings. But, and appreciate the question. And thanks, Mr. Smith, for allowing folks to chime in. Um, I think it helps our process.
Seth, I had another just couple of questions. So Mr. Smith, could you talk about, you had mentioned that the front um, building which was a garage more now, the one with the retaining wall. Um, and you said that that had, it had had a new roof in recent years, but looking at the pictures in the back one, like, what's the maintenance been like on that? And um, as far as the the building maintenance on the back barn? I'm sorry, you're muted.
Since taking possession fourteen months ago, I have not yet applied for a building permit to replace the roof. But um, certainly a roof with a little moss is not necessarily a bad thing. And again, the statute is, and and this is uh, I know for uh, in different towns, still standing doesn't mean it's in excellent care. It means it's still standing and is available for future improvement, which this building is, and this building is grandfathered under zoning. So it, it really, if I read the definition eighty one L, like, we're debating something semantically that the court raised as a question. The court never provided an answer, and the legislators never wrote it into the law. So again, you you, it's like trying to defend something that doesn't yet exist.
Alright.
But but my perspective, the law is, as the court interpreted, written plainly. A building is a building predates subdivision, one of which each building is still standing. I have two of these buildings on this lot. You can see from how the subdivision is that I'm providing access to the back barn from the frontage on Elm Street. There there's no practical way to ever subdivide these two from each other, okay? The back barn is two stories, so it's over eight hundred square feet. That is significant. When you have that large gambrel roof, like, nobody pours a full concrete foundation, a thirty five hundred dollar slab, a two-story structure, a new roof, wires electricity to it. Again, that's a hundred thousand dollars investment to create that from new. What this law allows is, I am allowed to sub, not divide, division this off. Why would someone want to do this? Well, let's say I retain that parcel for myself, okay? Now I have two structures, I can store four vehicles, it's two hundred dollars per month to store a vehicle. That allows you to have a rental rate of eight hundred dollars per month. That's not bad cash flow on something that you're legally allowed to create. That's all that I'm arguing, is that this plan is entitled to eighty one L endorsement, because the buildings are buildings that predate control law that are still standing. Those are the three questions that the legislators ask when they wrote the law. How I intend to use them moving forward? That's my choice. I have the legal right for storage, but storage certainly creates substantial cash flow. You know, I can use them as farm buildings for the fourteen acres I'm keeping across the street. That's a tree farm, basically, under the law. I mean, there's a lot of different uses that, those questions of use, land court already ruled in the case, the use is inconsequential to, is it a building or not? So I I respect the questions, I'm trying to answer the questions, it is a little futile to try to answer an unknown.
Right, no, I appreciate that, and it's, it's just, um, you know, I don't know if the court was being flippant with the Sitco case. Um, but to 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 go out of the way to note that a detached garage or chicken house might present a different case. And here we've got a detached garage, and I I don't know if I wanna make land court law tonight. Uh, and it's not my, not my job.
If just, just uh, what I did do here, if you'll notice, the the lot with the smaller buildings in question is a conforming lot for area, okay? It's a, it's a large parcel, it's an open pasture land behind this. I mean, this property itself is just very enjoyable and relaxing. So even if I retain those buildings for its park-like setting, like, it has value. We, the question is not, can can Mr. Smith build something there? That's not the question I'm asking today, and I can guarantee you that is an even higher hurdle to try to cross than the question we're asking here. This is simply, I'm entitled to record the plan at the registry of deeds, that's all we're doing.
No, I get that, I get that, it's just, I I, the gray area that the court has left us is it it lands right on this case, it's really interesting uh, to me, so.
Hello?
I take it there are no more questions or anything from folks on the board or anything else?
Actually, there's one more question from the audience.
Okay, if you don't mind, please state your name and address and.
Sure. Hi, Matt, it's Victoria Leah, I live next door to uh, Matt and his lovely home. Uh, Matt, so what I would like to say to you is, we've been here twelve years, I have never seen.
Wait, can I, I just wanna um, say, we actually um, talk through the chair. We don't actually have conversations with the applicants, so it, Mrs. Leah, you can, I'm gonna unmute you in a second, um, but just be mindful of the proper process.
And it should be a question, not just commentary.
Okay, go ahead and unmute.
The question, the question is, Mr. Smith has said that 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 building has had a new roof on it in the past ten years, we've been here twelve years, we have bought them, okay? I have never seen anyone putting a roof on there, if anything, the roof is sway, okay? So what I don't understand is because of this little building, okay? To get permission, he would need to keep that building, is that, is that right? If he gets the zoning and the permit and so on and so forth?
I don't believe so, no, right, Sarah? That all we're determining is if it's a substantial building that is still standing. Uh, so future use uh, is is irrelevant.
It's it's irrelevant, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Not much.
Uh, yeah, just to add to that, if if the um, the applicant wanted to use the property for a dwelling unit, uh, he would need to seek uh, relief from the zoning board of appeals, very similar to the case at seventy two Elm Street uh, from uh, maybe five years ago.
And just to clarify, as we said, you know, the analysis that's going on tonight is irrelevant to what he could do in the future on the lots, whether they're buildable, whether there's wetlands, whether he can meet the standard under the historic bylaw to reuse a historic property. All that we need to focus on is whether or not this is a subdivision or not, based on whether the two buildings that are standing are substantial.
So this is just the beginning of a long process, or a process, correct?
That's a good way to look at it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
And then there's just a note in the comments uh, saying that the barn is missing two walls, it cannot be used, in fact, it is a hazard. Uh, we didn't see any images that were um, submitted anything to that effect, so I wonder if Mr. Smith could address that.
And maybe with reference to which barn the comment is relating to, because we're obviously talking about two, so.
The back barn.
The back barn, I'm sorry. Okay, that's the two-story gambrel, yeah.
And is that, is that relevant to the determination of whether it's substantial?
Well, if it's missing two walls, is it, could it be a building or even a structure?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's interesting.
We might have lost.
I don't know when these pictures were taken, um, but I don't know, Sarah, if you can pull the pictures up on the screen readily. Um, we, I'm trying to find them, that's the front.
Yep.
No, the other one.
So there's another, there's another angle, I think, from the front of that one. Too many fronts.
Yeah, it's passed, it's passed that one, yeah.
Other, yeah, so we see two sides of the barn.
So maybe Mr. Smith can address what's happening with the other two sides.
I believe he walked away.
Oh, there he is. Hi there, Mr. Smith, did you hear that question? Um, uh, on how many existing walls there are in this barn that we're looking at?
Uh, I think you just logged off accidentally.
We lost him, yeah.
And I, I miss chance to log back up.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a really cute dog, by the way.
Yeah, so we'll just pause, I'll talk about anything other than the dog.
That's a substantial dog.
That is a hundred percent substantial dog.
It's a very well behaved dog, too, to sit on command for the picture.
Very proud, too.
Yeah. I'm gonna unshare this.
Unrelated to this case, the rail trail has some rail tracks coming up. So if anybody's looking to watch some big equipment at work.
Oh, what, oh, is the construction starting?
Yeah, I saw that today.
Yep.
That's really exciting, a lot of time and effort went into that. Looking forward to enjoying even the short length of it, I wish it was longer.
It's nice that the cost of steel went up to help make that go forward, yeah.
We need the Dover people to let us in. Connect. I heard the new Natick former rail trail is done now, the Cuchitua, I think it's called. I heard it's awesome, I have not been to check it out, but they just opened a long section in Natick.
So we're just gonna pause all, oh, I saw somebody had their hand up, but we're just gonna pause all. Yeah, Jeff, we're gonna pause all conversation until we get Mr. Smith back. He was obviously distracted.
I've definitely done that before, where you go to unmute and you press leave. I assume he's coming back, so maybe we should just keep our eye on after X number of minutes. We assume he left on purpose, but.
I mean, he's definitely got the link, because he logged on and he's got the calendar and everything, so. Yeah. He had a, he had a whole nother laptop, he had a lot of tech happening, so. Do you want to just put a pin in this, maybe go to minutes or something?
Yeah, we could do minutes, okay.
Can we do that? That's great.
Yeah.
All right.
You can do whatever you want, Seth.
You're in charge, man. I'm getting the strong sense that I don't, I mean, this A and R, the eighty-one L, goodness, we've got no control. Um, yeah, we had two sets of minutes for tonight. One was for the remarkably efficient meeting that we had the last time.
I was not, I wasn't at one of them, was it the really efficient one?
The Smiths are back.
Great.
Working on audio.
I'm about to break out the Jeopardy theme song, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, please unmute yourself and start your video.
If you can.
The board might just wanna take a vote. I don't know, maybe have deliberation and.
Yeah, do we need, Mr. Smith, we have the lingering question of how many walls are the back barn, but if that is pertinent to people's position.
Well, we have to, I mean, if, we have to do this tonight, or we have to do a special meeting.
Yeah.
I don't think there's more information that, I mean, can necessarily be provided. I think the difficult part is, we've all identified, is that this case law isn't, the statute isn't perfectly clear. The case law is only marginally more lucid than all of that. So, you know, as difficult as a position as it is for the Smiths to prove a standard that hasn't been borne out yet, I don't know that there's much more information they can provide. I feel ready to make a vote and I'm happy to tell you all where my head is at and kind of summarize where I came out based on everything we've talked about. But, oh, you're working.
I apologize, I'm in a Dover Board of Health meeting as well at the same time. So my sincerest apologies, I tried to answer all the questions and got opened up to the public and that's kind of outside the law, to be honest, but.
Well, the board does take public comment on sort of all of our meetings, whether it's a public hearing or not. So this isn't special to your case, but it doesn't have to be, it's not dispositive, you know, relative to the facts. But Seth, or I guess before I go on, did anyone else want to say anything before I summarize where my thoughts were on the board?
No, please go ahead.
Right, so I think, I was starting to say that I think that obviously the standard is hard to meet, it's unclear, it's not ideal, and it's a difficult position for the Smiths to be in. So I appreciate that that is sort of unfortunate, but it is where we are as it relates to where the case law stands today. In my mind, the statute, the legislation, or the legislator, when they chose the word building, they chose it on purpose. I think that language was actually pretty clear in the Sitko case. But I think the wording of the Sitko case was that the language is not the result of legislative oversight. The word building was chosen on purpose, and in my mind, it was to do, to distinguish it from a structure. And in that case, because, you know, just because a building permit would be required, or the building code would apply, or because it has value for some potential use, to me, doesn't make it dispositive as to whether or not it's a substantial building under eighty-one L. And whether there's ability to rent it, I don't even think that would be allowed under zoning, but you could also rent your front yard if zoning allowed it and make money. So that to me also is not dispositive. I think, you know, in looking at it, the Sitko case makes reference, whether they meant it or not, all I have is the case law to go on. And it said that they may feel differently about a garage, a wood shed, or a chicken coop. I think in looking at the images and based on the information we've been provided, that these feel more like a garage or a shed than they do a building. The front garage was labeled as a garage on the nineteen forty-four plan. I also think the pictures of it look clearly like it's a garage. The back building looks to me like a shed, there's some question about whether all the walls are still up or not. To me, it just, it just doesn't feel like it meets the standard of a building. I think relative to whether the historic bylaw language on whether a structure is significant is also not dispositive, because the historic bylaw in Medfield, as I said, is a special permit standard for the ZBA, which is a different standard than for the planning board under eighty-one L, and focuses on whether the use present or past is historic value. And just in this case, we know for a fact that use is irrelevant to the analysis under eighty-one L. And I think the lack of utilities and clear foundations also makes me feel like these are not buildings. I know in the one case that we've had before this board for eighty-one L in the recent past, that was dispositive. We denied an endorsement of an eighty-one L exemption case because the barn in that case didn't have utilities and a foundation. And I think that we haven't provided enough evidence that there's any more or substantial enough infrastructure to make these buildings. And I think also whether it's used for agriculture or not is irrelevant, just coming back to the point that how it's used is not dispositive to whether it's a building or a structure, or a building or not a building. So for all of those reasons, I think this does not rise to a level of qualifying for the exemption, and I would make a motion to deny endorsement. And I understand Mr. Smith's point, if he'd like to take us to court, he's certainly welcome to do that. I think we've made a compelling enough case based on the facts that we have. And ultimately, if the land court disagrees, that's their prerogative.
That's a motion, is there a second, or is there a?
Oh, let me make, if there's no commentary, let me make the motion a little bit more efficiently. So.
Good.
I was just gonna say, assuming that that's where others are going, I move to deny endorsement of the plan entitled Plan of Land for Land in Medfield, Mass. Prepared by Matt Smith, Manager Dover Mill LLC, dated October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, because it requires approval under the subdivision control law, because there's insufficient frontage and adequate evidence of the existence of significant buildings prior to annual town meeting nineteen fifty-three, the date of the adoption of the subdivision control law, have not been submitted. The mere existence of the barns do not meet the substantial requirement as significant work would be required to make them suitable as habitable space, and for the reasons that I described.
There's a second?
A second.
Teresa?
Uh, yes.
Paul?
Yes.
A yes vote is a vote to deny for people listening at home, correct?
So that's a yes from Teresa, a yes from Paul. Sarah?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
And Seth is yes as well. Good, well, thank you everyone, I think I'd rather lean this way, I think it's the right decision. So thanks for the thorough work on this, appreciate it. And I think we might have lost Mr. Smith, but I guess we'll let him know.
I'm just, I'm putting him back into the attendees, so I didn't hang up on him, but I'm happy to share the video with him if he wants it.
Great.
Do you want to go back to the minutes quickly?
I would like to go back to the minutes. We have the minutes for October eighteenth, we could do those quickly. That was just myself, Teresa, and Paul.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the minutes from October eighteenth.
I will second.
Paul?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
And Seth is yes. That was a, what was it, a seven-minute meeting, by the way?
What happens when we don't, the rest of us don't come, you guys are so efficient.
And we did not approve the minutes for the October fourth meeting, where we discussed the master plan. We thought we wanted to make sure everyone was on board with the minutes as drafted.
When Jim did some wordsmithing on those, so you do have a new version in your packet from the other day, we got emailed out the other day.
Yeah. So this is a vote for everyone.
Yeah.
I reviewed Jim's revisions and I thought the minutes were fine, so I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second.
Okay, Paul?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Seth is yes. Great, so sorry about the length of the review, the A and R. Slow might have been the way to do it. We have town meeting prep, Sarah?
Yeah, so just to run down the list of what we're going to be doing. We're going to start advertising in December for the zoning map amendment. So for the zoning map, we're gonna be fixing the buffer zone display error, which Mr. Smith actually discovered for us that last year. And we're also gonna be citing the new well three A location and creating a buffer for that, since that well is going in. And then we're gonna be amending our existing floodplain zoning bylaw per the new flood insurance rate maps that are being adopted over the next couple of months. And then the other thing is the table of views for the food cupboard, so that even though they're in their new home now, they still have the long-term goal of creating a new building and potentially partnering with the town of Medfield in some fashion, so that it could go on municipal property. And so you've seen that one, that was a pretty easy zoning, zoning table of views change. The good news is, I think, going into, you're very well prepped with these bylaws, we've been looking at them for four months already. So hopefully, the public hearing process won't be very arduous, and we can spend time working on the new projects that we just got the grants for. So, you know, we'll try to program things in a way that's, makes sense. But I do want to get the legal ad into the paper in December, so that we can cut off the public hearings in January.
Great.
We are working with a new JAS company, and so we're actually gonna do a new, a new zoning map from scratch. So it might be an opportunity to, you know, sort of rebrand, maybe update the symbologies and the colors or format a little bit, so maybe be, might be able to have a little fun with it.
A little fun would be nice. Good.
Public input on the colors.
No.
I think Paul found a new subcommittee, so there you go. How are we on State Hospital?
The Development Committee met with the selectmen two weeks ago and had a really great substantive update on where they're at, coming to their, you know, basically, they updated the selectmen on their process from when they received the proposals till now, and how they've just, I'd let their, at their meeting last week, they took the formal votes to recommend to the selectmen that Trinity be named most advantageous developer in order to allow them to move forward with a opening up the due diligence, the four months due diligence, no, sorry, a hundred twenty-day due diligence period, which is really important for Trinity, because, as you may know, they didn't have access to the buildings when they were putting their concept plan together. So it's really important that they are able to ground truth, you know, their proposal and make sure that, you know, the program that they're submitting and, you know, the financial component really works out. So it's a really good process. So they're actually going to the board's selectmen again on Tuesday for a formal vote on that. So it is a recommendation, but the board's selectmen don't necessarily have to accept it.
Good. Townwide master plan and the summit. Teresa, you want to take the lead on that one?
Yeah, Seth has dived deep. We, we've had a couple brainstorm, well, we had a brainstorming session, Sarah, Seth and I, and trying to count with a short but impactful format for the, for the master plan from the summit. Looking at still an early December date, right? I think is what we were thinking. Yep, and, you know, kind of taking it from the, you know, it's great that we have all the goals and objectives, but I think what we came to the conclusion was, you know, it's that next step of prioritization and kind of making sure and highlighting where things overlap, and as what we called out in, in the past as well. So kind of doing that in an interactive way as well with the different committees. So Seth, do you want to say anything else about that?
Yeah, I think that was it, I think kind of identifying the groups that signed the letter of support of the plan, and then put people together in the same room, that probably doesn't happen ever, and take the concepts that they endorsed and see what ideas can be produced in the next one to five years kind of thing, so.
Yes, so theoretically, we could use the space at the Public Safety Building, you know, the downstairs, bigger room. And I would like to get the feedback from the other board members, if you were okay with Seth and Teresa and I coming up with the program. Because we won't actually meet until the, the summit. So if we, if we do the summit on Monday, December sixth, that would be a regular planning board night. You know, that way we can just tackle it.
And I appreciate you guys doing it. Not only am I good with it, I'm really glad you're willing to do that.
Yeah. And so it's just coming up with it, like Teresa said, something that's not too onerous, you know, because that implementation table can be a little unwieldy. I took a stab at organizing it. Seth reorganized it, which was amazing. And so, you know, when I take those and just do something that is not going to be unwieldy for this session, this interaction, you know, so it's productive, we get some priorities. And, you know, we're talking to the people who can, you know, enable that change and, you know, sort of, you know, inspire them to continue that work.
More about getting conversations going, less about a representation of the master plan as well.
Always keep me alive. It is a dynamic document. You guys are the board that is going to be responsible for a lot of the work that happens, you know, with that master plan as a land use document, you know. So, you know, a lot of people you say it's just a plan that sits on the shelf, but it's not, it's not that way for you guys. So we, you know, you've always done a really good job over the past couple of years of, you know, being involved with it. So I think that you know, if we tackle bits and pieces at every, at these intervals, then it's going to stay alive really well. And actually, you guys got a comment. Thanking you for your fantastic work on the master plan. So one of the best projects of town is ever completed. Very well done. Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. That's very nice of you.
Kara, that can go in the minutes.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, we're down to only three at this point. One of whom is actually Blake, who I guess is technically in a butter for the last one, but could probably get promoted now. But the, the only good thing about some of these more difficult discussions is that it seems to bring out more people. So we're getting, you know, increased public participation. And then when they're there, some stay for the afterparts. So trying to get more people to come to our meetings was something we had talked about in one of our last meetings as a goal. So incremental progress.
Yeah.
It just happens when people happen to be scared about what's happening in their neighborhood. Sorry about that.
Good. Well, we'll keep submitting, I guess.
Keep on submitting.
Pull together something.
Yeah.
Good. Affordable housing, Jim?
Not a lot new. We, we went to the Board of Selectmen, reviewed the incentivizing rental program. And really didn't get a lot of comments, you know, was not, you know, not against certainly. You know, I think most thought it was a good idea. So that's a good thing. There's not a lot of, not a lot of controversy around it. It was kind of thought that we should put a more enticing name or title to it other than incentivizing rental programs. So pending a new name change to that, which we will discuss on Thursday and deliberate over for hours, I think. That, that should be ready to go right after, right after that. And, you know, technically, the Board of Selectmen will probably have to nod at it again, but I think it'll just be a nod if anything else.
Yeah, actually, it is on the agenda for tomorrow and I probably shouldn't have mentioned that to you.
Did you come up with a good name?
No, Michael Kuch, the name, and I can't remember what it was. I almost, I surely didn't.
What's wrong with the existing name?
You know, it felt generic to a certain extent. I thought it was fairly descriptive, but.
What about residential economic development?
Are there any economic development? Is there any economics in residential?
Well, because there's, you know, the rentals. I don't know.
I like, I like the incentivizing piece, so. But market, if Mark can drive through a name, that's great. And then, you know, this Thursday, we're going to be talking through some of the last comments for the housing production plan to provide to Jen Goldson, just to get that all finalized, if nothing else.
Great. No update from Historical Commission. There was counter-programming tonight. The Historical Society was hosting a talk at seven thirty. So I'm sure there would have been people that would have wanted to participate and hear the Hannah Adams discussion tonight. So.
I'd be happy to share the video.
Okay, okay, great. And then Sarah, on our agenda, you noted that we've got the special town meeting on Sunday and then a town election.
Yes. I, um, so as a department head, I'm required to go to town meeting. But I was looking it up in the town charter and actually says all elected and appointed town officials are required to attend town meetings. So that means you guys, that means all board members. I mean, you always go anyway. I just.
Just gonna say, imagine all of us were already planning on going, but you know.
Oh, yeah. I, I just didn't realize that that was, I always thought it was, I didn't, I didn't know what the language was. So when I looked at it, I was like, oh, that's really explicit.
And then what's, what's the penalty if we don't? Is there a fine? You know, like?
No.
Imprisonment.
They didn't play with the fines. No, they, it used to be like two pence or something like that.
You're stoned in the town square.
Did it also say appointed? Are you sure it said appointed?
You're appointed town official, yeah.
I was just checking. All right.
I just, I just work here.
Is there, is there a rain plan? Is it outside?
No, it's inside.
Well, it is inside.
Outdoor accommodations for folks who prefer to be outside.
Okay, because it looks like the weather might not be very welcoming.
Naturally. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, good. Well, thanks again for everything tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Did we talk about, I'm sorry, one of my kids was screaming, so I had to go for one second. Did we talk about the consultant proposals for the?
Oh, gosh.
Pretty sure I was listening while he was screaming.
I was actually, I was going to circle back around to that. So I said we were gonna start working on the grants. So, um, the Boris Leckman are gonna accept the grants. It's a seventy-five thousand dollar grant. Twenty thousand is for the zoning diagnostic. And so the other fifty-five thousand is for the update of the open space residential development bylaw and the mixed use or Route one oh nine corridor zoning update. And when I procured, I really did want to work with Judy Barrett on the zoning diagnostic. She also gave a proposal for the other work. And so I got two proposals for the other work. The other, so I would recommend to you that we work with Judy Barrett on that zoning diagnostic, but work with Ted Brovitz and Dodson Flinker on the other zoning work. You worked with them in the past. Actually, they did, they facilitated the two thousand fourteen Medfield State Hospital Visioning Session that, you know, informed, you know, the disposition, but they, I like their style when it comes to community planning. I like the way that they work. You know, in something like a one oh nine zoning discussion, it could potentially get a little wonky and awkward and maybe some people wouldn't like it as much. But they do really great job with their presentations and their materials. So I would recommend for that reason. And, and honestly, Judy Barrett is really overworked and I don't think that she'd deliver the type of hands-on zoning and community planning that we want for this process.
Okay. Just to clarify what you said, I want to make sure I understood that Sarah was, because when I, I just now quickly looking at the email you forwarded and looking at the task, you know, we had so much in the master plan that talked about, you know, review your zoning, review your zone. You know, there was a lot of pieces to that. We kind of tabled a lot of that for that. So you're saying that that would be part of Judy Barrett's efforts or that would be part of the other person, the other?
Actually, two things. One is, and they can be done independently. One is the zoning diagnostic that goes through the zoning bylaw and looks for structure and format, navigability, consistency, clarity. And then the other items are actually updating substantive portions of the zoning bylaw. But in a standalone kind of way, you know, we're looking at updating the open space residential development member, that's the cluster subdivision special permit that hasn't been used in twenty years. And then the other thing is looking at the one oh nine corridor for either mixed use or sort of the pockets of density types of and also downtown mixed use and residential. And so those are kind of standalone.
Okay.
Yeah. So there are definitely three discrete tasks or projects. But I think, you know, two of them being, you know, real sincere planning projects, you know, that we're going to need. You know, forums, we're going to need, you know, to have good materials for presentations, things like that. And Ted Brovitz, I think, would excel in that regard.
And it sounded like tonight we might have one person who wants to use the open space option. So. We'll see.
There, there's lots all over the place, you know, I'm look, always looking at these, you know, I see our zoning bylaw as basically, if you have it, you can do it, you know, like if you have two acres to create a new law in the RE district, you can do it. And, but if you want to do something, you know, more sensitive to natural resources, if we want people to do something that's more sensitive to natural resources, we need to provide them the regulatory framework to be able to go down that avenue, you know.
And just in terms of timing, when do you think these folks would come on board and do this, would do it concurrently with town meeting prep that quickly?
Yeah, I, it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be probably before January. So.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, it's certainly too late for the spring town meeting. Town meeting, because we're already past that. So we have to do the minimal public hearing that needs to happen for spring town meeting in, what do we say, December?
It's going to be in January.
January, so beginning in January. So after we have that kind of behind us, assuming there won't be a lot of work to do after it, turning to the diagnostic stuff.
Yeah.
I think the division of the responsibilities that you suggested makes sense. I think Judy is obviously like very skilled overall kind of holistic zoning bylaw person. I think she will be great at that, but that in and of itself is a big effort. So if there's, you know, more finite things that we could use someone else to move along in the meantime, I think that's a worthwhile division. So I was good with them.
Okay. Anything else? Or is there a motion?
Well, maybe I'm missing something, but on that email, Sarah, was there a separate proposal from Brovitz?
Yeah, there should have been. There should have been two, two proposals attached.
Barrett's and then. The other one's favorite, right? Oh, actually. Yeah, you're right. They're both Barrett.
Oh, shoot. Oh, wait, there's two from Barrett, one for the zoning diagnostic. One. Oh, shoot. Yeah. Okay. So there was one for the zoning diagnostic, one of, one was what I sent out for the procurement description. And then I didn't attach Brovitz. So I apologize.
Okay, I guess that's why, okay, that's my confusion.
But you know what I can do is just run through it real quickly. Here, I can share my screen. Did anybody go to that two thousand fourteen session for the state hospital? It was Jan- January fourteenth of two thousand fourteen. Very long time ago, yeah.
I had one of my kids on January thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. I'm pretty sure I was not at that thing on January fourteenth.
I was still in high school, so I was not there.
Kara as a Medfield resident. High schooler for civics class.
I'm really enjoying working with Kara, just so you know.
I'm not enjoying Kara making us feel old with her being in high school in two thousand fourteen.
Though that's when I graduated, MHS twenty fourteen, baby. I will say this is the most challenging minutes I've ever had to try to keep up with. So you set a good, a good precedent.
Go back and watch the video again.
That will be my workday tomorrow.
I always have to do that when Sarah starts talking about legal stuff. What fact did she say? All right. See, there's State Hospital Visioning Workshop. I'm looking for, oh, this is for the scope of services.
Have to admit I was there.
Good, yes. Yeah. So, you know, it was just kind of these, I know I'm going through this and you're kind of looking at it on the screen, so I apologize. But I think that they're demonstrating an understanding of how we get people on board and you know, how we, that we come to, you know, certain decisions and then test them out within the community. And Ted and Peter are really good at framing that. One of the things that I really like about this team is that Dodson Flinker are let's see, they're like landscape architects, designers. And so they bring that ability to create great graphics to the process. So. They were talking about the kind of analysis that they'll be doing for this. So not only do they have the, like, the design and facilitation expertise, but they also have a lot of experience doing corridor studies and downtown downtown zoning type of mixed use zoning experience. This office hours. That's unique. We never get people who want to, you know.
Come and spend the day. That's nice.
Yeah. But that's just kind of like the extra touch that I think that we need in Medfield. You know, a couple of extra meetings with the planning board and then extra touch points for the community. That's why they kind of stand out to me. And we work, we further refine the scope and the the process.
And Sarah, we don't need to vote for accepting the two groups. This is
Yeah.
Arrangement, so it's.
Yeah, they, they end up getting paid through the grant. But I want to make sure that you and I are on the same page about expectations and process. And I've worked with. About expectations and process, um and I've worked with both of these consultants before. I highly respect. Both of them, and so it's with that, I understand like the little differences that I think. Would be good for these individual tasks.
Great.
So if anybody has any concerns, I definitely want to hear them.
Maybe Sarah, you could send around this one too. Give it a quick read.
Yeah.
And I actually want to, I think we emailed about it, but wanted to say thank you for all the time you put into applying for this grant and. Um you know, looking out for our backs to get these resources. I think in the past, when we had asked the town for these resources, it got slashed from the budget. A bunch of times, so, but for this grant application and all of your hard work, we wouldn't be able to do this, so we appreciate.
We were really, really, really lucky, and we were really lucky, we got these grants, but you know why we got the grants? Because we had a master plan, because I was able to say, this is what we want to do, and these are the reasons we want to do that. And so it all circles back to the master plan.
Now it's time to execute the master plan.
Yeah.
It's really exciting because you didn't know, like, where, how we were going to even get to tackle this without.
Yeah, and and so to, you know, to that point, like, you know, we have to do all this stuff now because we got the grant for it. But we don't need to bring it to town meeting next year, you know, there's still time, you know, to be able to work on it, but, you know, we definitely have to harness. Getting that cash and to be able to, you know, get started on the projects.
And some of what happens with the state hospital stuff might inform some of the things that we're doing as well, so it's nice to be doing them in parallel. But other in terms of going to town meeting, getting the studies done, getting the money to pay for those studies. But then thinking about when we go back to the town, when the town has so much going on right now, it.
Oh, sure.
Everything at the school and with the state hospital, like, we, I know in the past, we've had our list. You know, town meeting activities, and we just kind of plow through it a couple at a time, so.
Yeah.
That list.
And that was one of the nice things about this year, you know, wanting to be a little bit light with our town meeting. Stuff, you know, coming out of the state hospital zoning vote and then COVID, and then knowing that there's all this stuff in the. Um the atmosphere um that there's only so much capacity for people to be really paying attention to, so. If we can get started on some of these activities, you know, you know, the mixed use. Conversation may not, along one oh nine, may not actually be something that people automatically um. Gravitate to, they meant, you know, it might be one of those things that I hate the the concept, um but at least we can get you guys underway. Um with, you know, some framework for, you know, why it is here to me. I know you guys know why you want to do it. But you can get a little bit of work under your belt, um you know, before it really becomes, you know, prime time, so that. You're able to have those conversations and have some, you know, materials or things like that, um things to show for it. Which.
And that'll help in the, you know, issues we've identified in the past about like making sure voters understand it, so we don't go down another. Senior housing overlaying district road.
Indeed, yeah. Too soon, too much too soon.
PTSD from that one still.
Yeah. Might be a while before you get over that, when we start bringing it back.
Good, are we done?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Please.
A second.
Great, Jim?
Yes.
Theresa?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Seth, yes. Great. Thanks, everyone.
Everybody.